From six to ten P M. Tickets were sold for eight dollars between April seventh and May sixteenth. Professional photography company Smile Pro was also in attendance to capture the moment. To attend prom, students were required to eligibility requirements. They were also required to attend school until ten forty-three with the exception of seniors attending the nine A M. Overca Elementary School event. Guests under the age of twenty-one were required to fill out a permission form for security and safety. June second, senior breakfast was held as well as vocational awards and graduation rehearsal. Students arrived between eight and eight thirty. Their their graduation tickets were distributed. It was allotted for six guests per student. This was then followed by the senior cookout held at the Barica Elks. It included a food truck, music, and long games until two P M. June fifth was the date of graduation. Everything went smoothly and was an overall successful event. That night was an all-night grad party. It started at ten P M. and concluded at five thirty A M. The following day was June sixth. Although it was a the following day, June sixth, although it was a free event, signups were required. The event consisted of food and beverage, a D J, video gaming truck, inflatables, selfie station hypnotists, caricature artists, henna and airbrush tattoos, angel card readers, R C car racing, student versus teachers games, and alumni shirt distribution. The last S A T test date was June seventh and required registration by May twenty-second. It is a sixty-eight-dollar test fee. However, this is subject to change based on additional reports or tardiness. Students had to register via college board. The exam lasted approximately three hours. Students on students can practice with Blue Book and Khan Academy courses. You may remember earlier in the year I had brought up the idea of a miniature library on behalf of the Anti-Bullying Club. I'm excited to announce that this was approved. I had amazing I had the amazing carpentry students build the box and D V C students paid it. We chose to place it in the preschool since those students do not have access to our regular resources. Last Thursday, June twelfth, we filled the shelf with children's books. The Anti-Bullying Club is ecstatic to have finished the project to show what we've done over the year. Fall sports information includes the following. Football will meet August fourteenth for uniform distribution and conditioning. However, J V and varsity will meet the following day, August fifteenth. Soccer, cross-country, golf, and volleyball will attend a session on August eighteen. For grades ten through twelve, elite athletes are welcome to attend a free sports physical day on August fourteenth from one to four P M. And will be held in the school's nurse's office. No appointment is necessary. Students interested in taking Spanish during the summer must submit their application forms as soon as possible. This summer session will last from June twenty-third to August thirty-first. And to conclude my final report of the year, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to represent Chaoxi's student body. But most importantly, those who elected me and supported me in this role. I am very passionate about making sure each voice is heard, which I think was very successful throughout the course of the school year. I have a lot of ambition and new ideas to share with you next year, so hopefully I'll see you next fall. Thank you.
Consent agenda. We have two legal bills, one for Howard Greenspan for three thousand one ninety and one for K M Education Law for one eight five six. Approval of and approval of the minutes of May twenty-seven. Can I get?
Make a motion and we accept the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then I suppose. Unfortunately, the business manager is not here today with any kind of report.
Um, I was just going to point people back to the packet that was shared. Um, she was she did provide some information um that I believe was sent out, which had a I'm sorry, I can't single locate it in my cloud stuff here. Wrong file. Um, it had this this cover sheet on it. Um, says June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Um, again, this was as of June ninth, this was all the information about where each cost center stood uh based on the department codes, which ones were overspent, which ones are underspent. Um, so again, um, please um reference that. I do believe we're gonna talk a little bit more about this uh when the budget subcommittee reports uh a little later on the agenda. Um, but this is this is all the this is the most up-to-date information that I have at this time.
Tony, she sent that on June ninth?
It was printed on June ninth. I don't I think it was shared as part of the packet.
It was part of the packet.
Okay.
Yes.
Then we have any comments on it this time? Or do you want to wait till the budget subcommittee or? All righty, superintendent's review.
I think this might be the earliest I've ever been up.
Why?
And I am uh I I actually tried to keep this short and sweet tonight. Um, and hopefully um we'll get through this quickly as well. Enrollment update, it has not changed. We're still at at twelve sixty-five. Again, I think there was only about three, two or three weeks between our May meeting and this particular meeting. Uh, freshman class is holding steady at three forty-eight. Uh, again, we are going to look over the summer and see, um, you know, if we have some kids that, you know, change their mind, decide to go back to ascending districts. We already have a plan in place to try to backfill some of those slots off the waitlist. Um, and if we exhaust the waitlist, then reach out, uh, and probably do probably do a social media push. These are the programs that we have available. You know, if you have a student that's interested in them, please reach out, please apply. Um, grade ten at this point in time, I I mean, I think um we've exhausted kind of all those avenues to try to recruit kids and backfill there. I think, you know, that's that's gonna end up being you know, around three hundred kids. Um, and obviously, grade eleven is now gonna move up to be seniors, and so we're gonna have you know, a senior class of about three hundred, a junior class of about three hundred. Uh, we should have somewhere between three hundred and fifty and three hundred and sixty tenth graders. And we're looking at bringing in between three hundred and fifty and three hundred and sixty ninth graders. So we're slowly moving that bubble across. Hopefully another year or two, we'll we'll be back to uh more more robust enrollment. Um, last co-op update, the co-op update, excuse me, for class of twenty twenty-five. Um, Sophia had mentioned, uh, the last two years, we've actually done a um, kind of a recognition for them, similar to what we do with the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners. So any student that had accepted full-time employment with their co-op employer, uh, we invite them down, we recognize them. Um, this year, we had so many of them, we actually had to do two separate pictures because we couldn't fit all the kids together in one one picture. Um, we do have plans to continue to to grow that, and there's already been some conversations about how we can uh we can add on to that. And um if if you are on on social media or any of the other school websites, the other vocational school websites, this has become kind of a common trend. And a lot of places are made there. It's it's almost turning into a signing day kind of activity, um, which is kind of our long-term goal, and that's where we want to go with this. But again, we had we had up sixty-seven percent of our seniors were on co-op, two hundred thirteen kids. I think I it was right around eighty-five of them that accepted jobs with their co-op employers. Uh, some of them are still staying in that trade, but maybe accepted a position with a different employer or change jobs. Uh, we had over a hundred, almost a hundred and ten thousand hours worked by that class, which I think is amazing. Uh, and those kids made uh just over one point eight million dollars during the time they're on co-op, which again is is another great I think is a great outcome for the students. It's a great outcome for our local businesses and industries that that rely on our kids to uh help support. Um, again, this breakdown hasn't changed much. I think it went up by one um since the May meeting. Um, five Bedford students, seventy-four Bill Ricka students, sixteen from Burlington, fifty from Tuxbury, sixty-eight from Wilmington. Uh, and again, that was the class that just graduated a week ago, week and a half ago, whatever it is at this point in time. Class of twenty twenty-six is our juniors. Uh, this time of year, there's always a flurry of activity. I know this the the Cory reports have been coming in fast and furious for kids to go out and get their placements done before the end of the school year. Um, we already have thirty percent of our junior class, ninety students participating. That number will probably increase, I'm gonna say, by another ten or twenty students before we hit some on vacation. They've made almost a hundred and eight thousand dollars so far. You know, or, you know, just over sixty-six hundred hours. You see, we're supporting eighty employers currently. Again, that that number should ebb up as we get more kids that go out and start to participate in this. Uh, currently, we have two from two from Bedford, thirty-four from Bill Ricka, four from Burlington, uh, twenty-two from Tuxbury, twenty-eight from Wilmington. And like I said, it's ninety out of our three hundred juniors, so it's thirty percent that are currently participating. Uh, admissions update, this was as of um last week. Um, I think I I apologize. I think I forgot to change the date on the slide. Um, but you can see, we still have seventy-seven students that have been waitlisted. Uh, we're up to ninety-nine students that, for whatever reason, either declined initially or have since changed their mind about their plans for next year. So we will continue to maintain that waitlist. We'll continue to work through that um right up until right up until and through the start of next school year. Um, so again, if we continue to have kids that, you know, over the summer decide that they want to stay in the sending community or a family may move or whatever it might be, um, we will continue to actively monitor that. Um, I believe we're hovering right around that three fifty mark. Um, we typically leave a little wiggle room uh just to see if we have any uh any student, any of our current ninth graders that are gonna end up repeating. We want to make sure that we have space for them. Um, so we we usually kind of hold around that three fifty number until the end of summer, and then we try to get as close to three sixty as possible to start the school. We did not have, uh, we and I'll I'll be honest, there was a lot of discussion amongst the leadership team. With the three hundred and fifty freshmen we had this year, there was some concerns um that when students got their final shop placements, if it wasn't their first shop choice, were we gonna have a lot of kids that made that decision to go back to their sending schools? Uh, to date, it's only been two kids, um, which I think is amazing. Now, I may have just cursed myself and over the summer, a whole bunch of them may make that decision, but um uh so we we were really worried about that, and that was something that we were we were closely monitoring. But it really hasn't seemed, it seems like even if the kids didn't get their first choice, um, their second or third choice was something that they were still interested enough in that they still want to be here, and it's still something that they want to pursue. So I think those are those are positive things. Um, and again, that that's the another one of the downsides of bringing in the bigger groups. And we only have so much space in in certain shops, and if if one or two programs are really popular, it it does cause that ripple effect where kids end up in different places. Admissions update on the class of twenty twenty-nine, and and I think this is just an update from um the last time as well. Waitlist is now combined by score. Um, after April fifteenth, we moved to a combined waitlist, so regardless of which community the student's from, whoever's next on that waitlist is the one that get off gets offered admission. We did change our admissions policy last year to say that any late applicants, we wouldn't look at until after July first. So we currently have, as of the other day, we had eleven in the queue, um, which were kids that, for whatever reason, decided to apply after the application deadline. Uh, so we will we will take a look at that when July first rolls around, and uh at that time, we'll see where they end up um getting placed on the waitlist. Um, couple of other updates. Um, there had been some conversation in the past, and I actually had I had a chance to connect with one of our current faculty members. Um, there was a suggestion to do a memorial bench and or tree um for Tom Severo. Um, a a student had reached out, and I believe a parent had reached out. Um, and I asked them to uh to work with a faculty member, um, just so we have a point, I have a point of contact, we have a point of contact. Um, they've come they've come back with a couple of proposed locations. Um, Bob Lawler, our our facilities director, and I kind of looked at um the ones they proposed. We have two potential spots to put them. Um, what what my intent is and what I'd like to do is um work on this over the summer, come up with a plan. Um, I know that the the students were planning on fundraising to help offset the costs and potentially pay for all of this. Um, what we're looking at doing is putting the bench and the tree uh somewhere up in the vicinity of the soccer field, um, baseball field, turf field up there. Um, but in a location where it's not uh going to impede on the field in the future. We didn't want to plant something so close that the tree overbrewed the field or caused other issues. So um what we'd like to do is dedicate it, um, probably at one of the home games um in the fall. So um over the summer, we'll work on pulling all of that stuff together, finalizing the location, and then we come back in the fall. Um, I mean, some of the shops are probably involved in in, you know, we had talked about having maybe a little slab or or a little patio for it to sit on. Um, and then hopefully we could do something nice in the fall to recognize that. Um, the other piece here is just a little little bit more housekeeping. Um, I don't know how many of you got the notification in the mail. Uh, the M A S C, M A S S conference registration is open. Um, I know uh it was it was uh the intent of my outgoing assistant and my incoming assistant to work together on those registrations. So if people can please let us know uh sooner than later, so that if you're interested in going. Um, I've said this many times, I I go to the superintendent's conference, um, I've been to A C T E's national conference in the past, I've done some other things. I actually think this is probably one of the best-run conferences, um, based on the variety of topics they run.
Not location.
Well, I didn't say location. But as as far as what they offer and in the, you know, and the things that you can take away in the different the different workshops you can go to, I I've always thought this is one of the better uh ones that's out there.
Sounds like a family.
Won't you get us in that place last year?
Yep, we'll we'll.
That's awesome.
We'll book it.
That's why I wanted to. That's why I wanted to go there. Where was last year's?
Uh, we stayed we stayed in downtown Hyannis. We didn't stay at the actual resort.
The end conference.
The anchor in.
Leicester.
Yeah. Um, so again, I I didn't include any pictures or updates. We we have, uh, I think I've said this before, we have like four pretty large-scale projects that are going on. Uh, they're all coming together. Um, Sophia, our student representative, and I were talking a little bit before the meeting. Um, the Cosmo related room renovation is probably about seventy-five percent done at this point in time. Um, all the workstations and tables and mirrors have been installed. Um, we've started to bring power into that space. There's some final uh electrical installation stuff that has to be done. They were moving the old cabinets and stuff out of there today uh in anticipation of uh finishing the painting and doing some of that other stuff, so that's well underway. I knew business technology space, uh, all the walls are up, everything's been framed, all the drywall's done. Um, the ceiling grid is in the classroom area, and about half of the ceiling grid is done in the in the main area of the shop. Uh, all the all the rough wiring's been done, lights are up in the classroom area, uh, so that's progressing nicely. The Masonry Building, the uh the contractors, the Masonry Building is supposed to be back on site tomorrow to do all the finished grading um or the sidewalk slash driveway access, whatever you want to call it. Um, patch all the asphalt, do all the stuff, so they hopefully will be out of here in a week or so, and that project will be wrapped up. Uh, we have sprinkler, we have sprinkler installation scheduled for over the summer. Uh, so we are we are on track uh to have that open in September when the kids come back, which is a great thing. Um, and then I was actually, I wanted to get on my office for a few minutes this afternoon, so I took a walk down the metal fab. Um, I believe there's only four pieces of equipment left in the whole metal fab shop at this point. Everything's been cleared out, stored in automotive. They will be in next Monday to stack doing the, actually, I take that back. They will be dropping off equipment this Friday to stack doing the floor and metal fab next Monday. Uh, we have the floor contractor lined up, we have the painting contractor lined up. Uh, we have the the ventilation people have been in and done some preliminary work. They're gonna be back later this summer. Um, we have a bunch of electrical work that will be completed, uh, by some of our staff members. So uh that is rolling right along. Uh, we are um, we're under budget at this point in time. We actually have some money, uh, some some of the stuff came in under what we had estimated, so um, we have the ability to kind of take another look at, is there another piece of equipment or something else we want to add down there towards the end of the project, so that'll be great.
This is tech project, that's, this is the space that.
That's your bakery space.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said we're gonna make classrooms.
Yeah. We we had originally planned to put three classrooms in there, and then um what we ran into was it was two was easy.
Right.
Um, the third one, trying to get a hallway in there, or how we were gonna access the third one, we ended up with some really weird shaped rooms. Um, and then there was a conversation, actually, I believe it was the director of facilities said, hey, why don't we take business tech currently has three classrooms, why don't we take business tech, make a new space for them in here, take the three classrooms. So we've got three classrooms, we're just gonna move business tech over there.
Business tech's going the other person. Gotcha.
So we're like, we'll have three new science rooms in the fall.
That's good, cuz we.
We need a space.
Space, that's great.
I thought I think I'm good.
Anybody have any questions, superintendent?
I think we're good.
Okay, subcommittee reports. Audit subcommittee. Um, I guess I'll leave you.
Oh, lucky me. Thanks, Charlie.
Chairman's not here.
But I got a I got a gift card or.
Yeah, he was here last night. He's. He's off on vacation.
Thanks, Charlie. Um, all right, so last night, the audit subcommittee meeting, I think, had the longest meeting I think I've ever seen, which was two two and a half, two forty. Um, so uh John, I forget what's his name.
Jasowitz.
Jasowitz from is now C biz came in to present the um, the standard uh like the management letter, the um standard financials um for our review. Um, it was a pretty hearty discussion um because of the items, if you read in the management letter, there were noted, um, you know, two significant deficiencies. Um, one was a more of a recommendation. Um, but, you know, some major things we need to address, um, one being the cash rec reconciliation process. Um, the other one they noted was um to have a better process around monitoring the budget actuals, cuz they did note like a significant encumbrance that we didn't have enough funds. Then the other was just general coding in the ledger. So yeah, and then we kind of discussed the um as part of the fiscal year twenty-three audit, we discussed, um, they had provided recommendations from that. Um, so that's another thing we kind of, you know, did have the understanding that I think some was gonna bleed into the twenty-four just due to the timing. And I think everybody's aware that because of the timing of the prior auditor, that's what kind of put the one so far behind. They had significant problems reconciling, cuz as part of any audit, they have to basically confirm prior balances. And that simply becomes really important when you transition auditors. So I think due to the timing, plus that, plus the additional things we've come have led us to where we are now. Um, so um, you know, I think things that came out of it were um we also found out with E and D that basically um that we have to get this certified. So one of the things we uh wanted to bring to the full committee's attention is that it's you know, we did ask the auditor what standard practice, like some districts, you know, do their own E and D and then submit it, but there is some, but it's, you have basically what's called an engagement letter, basically, which is part of your services, but then there's also like uh additional services you can take on. So that's typically, you said it's more on the former, which uh schools typically with themselves. But this year, because we need to get it certified by six thirty, uh, we're requesting the committee to approve the additional fees for Cbiz to basically prepare it. And then the superintendent will submit it because it needs to be submitted and certified by six thirty. Um, because in this year's budget, we've allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for funding of the stabilization fund plus the additional.
Two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five for the field house. You're looking at close to a million bucks. So that's the one thing we wanted to bring that one. Um, and then the other thing they did note, we hadn't done a student activity fund, which again, I mean, you can explain it better than I can, but the that kind of falls out of like G E Z I regulations, but I mean, as he did note, for many years, they've had a lot of problems with many school districts with like fraud and other things. I'm not saying that's what's going on here, so uh, just saying that that's was another recommendation we thought it would be good to do. Um, and just for people's understanding, that's usually not done as part of the main audit, that's done as part of like a secondary audit. So we're requesting um the additional fees for Cbiz to basically perform a student activity audit. Um, uh, basically to do basically now, so they would take that off. So that's uh what we're looking to. And then, you know, basically to, uh, so I guess that I'll brief first, the motion is was made last night to to the full school committee that authorizes Cbiz um to perform an audit on the twenty twenty-four student activity accounts and approve extra fees for the completion of the twenty twenty-four audit, which is basically to do the filing of B and D. So that's the first motion I'd like to.
What the cost? What what's the cost of that?
They said that the.
Student activities is five thousand.
Five thousand dollars and the additional fees probably.
And just to clarify, the the additional fees was was E and D, but it was also the cash.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
So they they're looking at between three and five thousand dollars.
Or ten hundred.
For that, for that service as well. Um, and just one, just one clarification from out of last night. I did get a follow-up from John today saying that um the rep letter that he had promised to get to us hasn't made it through their final approval. Um, he anticipates us having it tomorrow. Um, but he just just so everybody's aware that, uh, I know he had promised that last night in the meeting, and then sent me something today saying he didn't have any.
And just as far as people's timelines to understand, basically, Tony's email that he sent out a month ago that talks about the timeline of E and D, I think this year it's very important for people to understand the timing of that to get approved. In past years, didn't matter as much, but basically, cuz this year, because if you're if you're moving funds out of your E and D, that's gotta be certified, and and that was voted in the budget. So I think that's another piece, why we need to get this done as part of that. I mean, you still want to have a good process going forward, but, you know, I think that's another key thing to note. So I don't think Cbiz will be doing this in future years, but I think in order to get it over the finish line, that it's accurate and correct for this year as an anomaly, that's why we are author we're requesting those additional fees. So I think that's my motion.
Do you want to?
That was a long one, I can.
Do you want to do the whole here or do you want to do?
I would. I'll second that motion. Any discussion, any discussion?
This motion is to move the funds.
To allocate.
To allocate the funds.
Funds to pay the auditor.
Yes.
Plus any additional costs or the whole bill?
It's the whole bill, so five thousand dollars to the student activity fund, because we feel we feel like there's enough on the table to warrant that. And then three to five to Tony's point for the additional cash reconciliation slash uh E and D.
So do you need to have an up to ten thousand amount or?
I think it's more, I think it's more just, that's the ballpark. I think it's just, keep it general, just to say, cuz it could potentially, if they come back and say that it's twelve thousand dollars. I mean, I think the student activity one's gonna be five, cuz that's in the in the.
Do we want to set amount? Do we want to say up to?
I would say up to ten.
Okay, that's that's fine.
And where does it come from? Is it, is there a place that it would come from?
Uh, I will, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to dig through the budget and figure out where we can take it from, but.
The student activities for what then?
Student activities is like, uh, the, you know, the class of twenty twenty-six, the friends of the ice hockey team.
Okay.
So any any group that fundraises or collects money then gets deposited in an account and then gets expended by the school district is considered student activities.
Athletic as well as some of that.
Yeah, some of them, yeah, some of them.
Oh, we, yeah, some of them.
Okay.
So by, so what what you told us last night is is by regula, it's not law, but by regulation, the Department of Ed says that has to be done every at minimum of every three years. You can do an internal audit on the two interim years if you want to. Um, we haven't had one done in a while, um, so he was, he's recommending that, you know, we, well, he had recommended doing like a combo twenty-three, twenty-four. We had a conversation last night, we're gonna do twenty-four and then see.
So they're auditing our student activities account.
They're gonna come in and.
Make sure, I understand, I understand.
Who deposited the money, how much money was deposited, what was.
Gotcha, right, I understand. Cuz there's a lot of money being moved in and out of there. We signed the warrants, promised fifteen thousand, you know, okay, thank you.
Yeah, for all that stuff, yeah.
And even though this one's not required by G E Z I, I think there's enough
Okay.
here to warrant that, the tradition. So do you want in the amended vote, do you want it to say up to ten thousand dollars?
I mean, I think it should. I I can I can browbeat John to to make to make it fit within that budget.
All right. So we all set?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimous vote.
Uh, the other motion was made to accept the financial statement and auditor's report as presented. Um, to accept that for twenty twenty-four.
Everybody should have got a copy of that.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous?
Um, one other thing I talked to Tony about is, I think there's enough stuff here and enough concern. So I did talk to the auditor after the meeting about C-Biz, a lot of these auditor firms have like internal, like as a separate, it's not like, they have, you know, audit services, but they also have consulting services, so basically, they have a division that does like internal audit, will come in, review, prepare a report. So I'm making a motion or putting up, you know, you got a motion, but a topic for discussion to basically say, I think it's time that basically we give the superintendent to, it doesn't have to be C-Biz, but to solicit some bids to basically talk to a couple of firms about coming in to do a full, I mean, maybe we start with the issues that are here, but in my opinion, there's enough here that I would say to do a full-blown internal audit, review and prepare.
Of our processes.
Of processes, yep. And that way you have everything documented, it's on paper, and basically then you can refer back. That's my topic for, not, not a motion, but as a topic for discussion.
Would that be a future gen, agenda item, or is that more of a conversation?
I think it's more a conversation for now, for people to apply upon, then you can make a motion.
Right. Anybody wanna chime in here? If I could get a bit.
There, there certainly seems a need, um, with fluctuations that are happening in the business operation, um, at the moment. Um, it should become timing, when it, when that, um, complete audit function served the most purpose, presumably, uh, when we're stabilized on the man, the management of the, of the business office going forward. But I, there certainly does seem to be a need, and I assume when you say, when you reference Kent, what we see here, I mean, it's, it's the things that the auditor has already found, certain areas that need to be improved, et cetera, and also s- certain deficiencies.
Yeah, and as the auditor said, that they do an audit, that's only scratching the surface, like that's basically just coming in and testing certain things, that's not a full-blown like.
It's not, he used the term forensic.
Forensic, yeah, exactly.
Yep.
And then for another thing for people to think about too, is you're about to go into an MSBA project.
Yes.
We have this issues with the standard stuff, you know, what are we gonna do when the MSBA comes, starts knocking about? And that's the other thing we had noted with the auditor, was basically like, a lot of the findings from last year were recommendations have now become deficiencies. Now what happens, or sorry, significant deficiencies. What about next year when you go into and those aren't rectified, and basically now you got things on your audit report that could impact like the ability to borrow money, come back federal aid, so there's a lot of stuff to think about, or even the MSBA if they start sniffing around.
Bling ratings, you know, like.
Bling ratings, yep. Bank stuff.
So do you wanna make a motion, or I, was that whole thing a motion?
I would, I would make a motion to, I would say authorize the superintendent to solicit bids for a full-blown internal audit review from at least a couple of firms to figure what, and we could pare it back depending on cost and, so.
Get a second to that?
A second.
Do you want to have something in place by the fall? Is that the idea, like going into the next school year?
Yeah.
That makes sense, right?
I think we want to do something before.
Soon, yeah.
Yeah.
How long does it take to get multiple bids, and how quickly do places like this work?
The guy said last night they could put him in touch with, uh, the, whatever, the department.
Yeah, you're talking, you're talking within a week or two.
Yeah, you could make it happen, yeah. Not that we.
Well, I'm not sure if we have to go, you really have to get three bids?
No, I don't think we have to, but we can, we can explore multiple, because I think.
That, that still only takes two weeks.
We could also look, we can try to engage that as well, and there's, I think there's some different, there's some different avenues. And maybe it's, these are the different avenues we can go, instead of here's three companies, kind of thing, um, but yes.
We wouldn't be using our auditor, that would be soliciting.
We could potentially.
Okay, I'm just, so this is gonna work. I understand.
So they have different divi, and I was a little confused about that initially with, um, when he said that they had helped with the cash reconciliation issue, because I'm like, how can you be doing that if you're the one that's auditing our practices? But there's multiple divisions within that company, so like the division that, that John Jasowitz works for doesn't have anything to do with the division that does the cash reconciliation and E and D piece. That division doesn't have anything to do with the division that does the forensic audit, it's that divi, you know, so there's, it's a big enough company where they're all kind of separated, they're all little silos.
Like even if he separately had, came in and you said he had some firm or some districts that basically contracted you E and D, that's a separate department that does, so they're all separate groups, yeah.
They're all separated.
Sounds good. I don't know, I still have a little problem with that, but okay. But so essentially, we're asking them to give us an idea for processes, right, in terms of, right, okay, got it, makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Yeah, the audit is essentially, you know, do the books balance, do, do, do the numbers, do the numbers in the ledgers match up with what you're saying you've done and spent, and the accounts that you have? This would be more a, show us the documentation of where you got this number from, how this was derived, who collected it, who signed for it, all of that.
Who's entering what lab?
Yeah.
Right, sounds good.
Like, yes, you brought up, not that we need to go there, but today that would have been flagged, but.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Did they, um, say that we would be able to get it done on time? E and D?
He, he said he's gonna do everything in his power to make it happen. Um, he did send me the updated stuff today, um, I don't have a point of contact at DOR, so now I have to try to figure out who it is that that needs to be resubmitted to, so, um, that's, that'll be on another thing I might to do this tomorrow with, uh, my comptroller, so, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, unanimous? You done, Kent? All right.
Let's not blame the guy that's in the health.
Ah, Ron, Budget Committee.
Budget Subcommittee met this evening. Um, we discussed one of the many things that we're asking for your approval tonight, the fiscal twenty-five encumbrances. Um, this was sent out to myself, the, uh, encumbrances, um, include a total of a hundred ninety-three thousand, eighty-five thousand for health insurance, forty-eight thousand for summer salaries, thirty-five thousand to update the access control system, and twenty-five thousand for programmable sign, Tony, if you wanna elaborate.
I think the whole committee got that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you said.
I think, I think it did.
Yeah.
It went to me and the Budget Subcommittee members, I'm sorry. I hope everybody's seen it, I rephrase that, let me state that, I hope everybody has seen that, does that sound correct? Thank you so much. Um, Tony explained about the money, go ahead.
So a, again, just to kind of go down through this list, so, um, eighty-five thousand dollars is the difference between what we budgeted and what we should have paid for our eighty percent of the health insurance. Um, so again, we want, we want to make sure that that money is transferred into the correct account. Um, summer salaries, we've done this for years, but we've never actually had a cost center or a, uh, a, a place that it lived. So it was always billed under other, whether it was building maintenance, or it was billed under overtime, or whatever it was. So again, these are our, these are some of our vocational instructors. Um, we've done this for many years, we pay them to come in over the summer to do plumbing repairs, and, and to do electrical work, and to do carpentry work, and to do all that other stuff. Um, that is, is a very high estimate, I do not anticipate us spending that much, but again, what I want to do is I want to start tracking that, um, so that we, you know, moving forward, we can budget year over year and say, this is how much money we need to have, um, and this is what we're gonna do with it as we go forward.
Excuse me.
And this is separate from the teachers that are teaching summer school, or the teachers that are teaching summer programs?
These, these are people that are actually in here doing, um, like, like trade related, trade related work.
Okay.
Um, and then again, the, uh, as I explained, uh, explained to the Budget Subcommittee earlier, um, the access control system is what runs our security cameras and the, um, the badge access to the building. Um, we do already have some money in the capital budget for next year to upgrade some cameras and to do some other stuff. What we found out is that the, um, the system that runs this whole, or the, the controller that runs this whole thing, uh, is no longer supported um, by the manufacturer. Um, we don't have to do this right now, but it would be in our best interest, um, as we're doing the updates to have this updated as well. Uh, if we don't do it, then we can probably get another couple of years out of it if we have to, or we don't have the money at the end of the year. But it just made sense where we're gonna upgrade some cameras, and we're gonna upgrade some of the access points, um, if we have the extra money to try to roll it all into one and take care of it this summer. Um, and then the last item was, those of you that have been here for a couple of years, remember that the early conversation, um, there is, um, a sign, a display out here between the two main entry doors, um, that I believe is, is vintage, probably nineteen seventy-five. Um, and we've had some conversations about having a sign out there that we can put a programmable message on, uh, you know, kind of up, upgrading that whole, um, excuse me, one second. Sorry.
Okay. The numbers we have. Eighty-five, forty-eight, thirty-five and twenty-four.
I was just gonna mention that we, a few of us went to a retirement party too, and it was wonderful, it was wonderful. And it was interesting watching videos and stuff about it, and listening to the stories about the different teachers and administrators and secretaries, et cetera.
It was, it was a good time.
It was a very good time.
Very nice, yeah. That was a good job.
You all set on that, so?
Yes, so tho, those are, those are the things that I'm asking to encumber, again, if we have available funds.
I understand.
If we don't have available funds, um, I did prioritize those in that order, health insurance, summer salaries, access control, a programmable sign would be the, the order that we would want to, uh, we want to address that.
Uh, I will make a motion then that we, I don't know what to write about this, um, vote to accept the fiscal twenty-five encumbrances.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote.
Uh, the rest of our, of our meeting this evening, we talked about the status of the fiscal twenty-four E and D, Tony updated us on that, and fiscal twenty-four takeaways and the timeline, that was, um, hopefully as we move forward, the E and D gets certified in a timely fashion in the fall. And so by March thirty-first, next year, we are, that's our target date of twenty-six. Tony, you wanna speak on anything?
Um, just one reminder about the, um, temporary measure to authorize, um, end of year budget transfers and utilizing the same electronic format that we do for warrants.
Oh, correct, yes, thank you.
That's okay.
I didn't know if you wanted to, um.
Is there something else you want me to comment on first?
No, the other, um, do we have to put that through, where the memo vote to designate purchasing?
That's a, that's a different conversation.
Okay, no, I understand, we had a discussion, thank you, Tony, we had a discussion tonight that, uh, rather than gather everybody to try to have another meeting, considering we have summertime approaching, everybody has schedules all over the place. Get to it in August first, so we decided that we would ask the committee to approve the electronic, help me out, Pat, how do we word that? Electronic.
So a tem, a temporary measure to approve end of year budget transfers, utilizing the same format that's the warrant approval.
The warrant approvals, yes.
But you, you had a caveat on that, what did you want?
I want everyone to respond to it, whether it's an I or an N.
So the document.
So it needs ten responses, not just directly.
Document will be sent out by yourself.
Uh, it would, it would probably Mary Ru, I mean, Mary Rubio is the one that sends out the warrant information.
So this time I'll be, we have to just discuss the format with her, I think it's, it's easy to do.
Yep.
Document will come out, please respond to it, all of us, whether you, we have to have a.
Approve or disapprove, it's.
Will it be a docu-sign, or will it just be an email reply, if, yeah, you know?
That's gonna have to be, because.
It's gonna have to be docu-signed, because you.
So now it's docu-signed, but how are we gonna indicate yes or no?
It has to be docu-signed. Docu-signed.
We'll, we'll have to work on.
Okay.
So it will have to be checkbox, yes or no, and a docu-sign.
Sure, it can be done.
And a sa, a signature.
Because of the current situation, because he doesn't know what, because of the.
Yes, I'm. We're not sure exactly what we're gonna have, um.
So we, that has to go out, what do we say, Pat, uh?
By the fifteenth.
By the fifteenth of July?
We need to verify that, but we're pretty sure it's July fifteenth.
Okay, we have a little wiggle room on that, and so we ask you all to respond to it, and we'll figure out Mary will go checkbox, so that can be done. And that will allow us.
To the end of year transfer.
End of year transfers.
And, and what we also talked about, there is some stuff in, that's already listed in the budget, so like there's an OPEB tran, there's an OPEB, uh, uh, budgeted amount, sorry, I don't know why I couldn't think of that. Um, so all the ones that are already listed out in the budget, we will start with, because we really don't need the approval for that. It'll just be the ones that are left at the end, like if we, if we have additional money and it, we want to put it in health insurance, we have additional money, we want to put it in OPEB, um, that's, that's kind of where this will, will fall, um, unfortunately, at this particular juncture in time, we don't have accurate numbers as to what that's gonna look like.
So I think I made the motion to, um, allow the, I'm sorry, Karen.
I have the whole motion.
Okay.
All I need is a first and a second.
Okay, I made the motion.
Second. Does anybody have any questions? So this motion is really to allow him to do this, this is the process, and, and you are approving the process, but it's mostly to allow him to do this process, as we do with it.
And then when the thing comes out, is there opportunity to ask questions about it, or have concerns, or whatever?
All good to go.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous vote?
I think, uh, that, uh, that concluded our meeting, we just discussed the.
Right, that was a nice short meeting.
It was a little, um, it was shorter than the Audit Committee must have wanted, let's just talk. Um, no, we discussed the March thirty-first is, uh, if, so if I read that correctly, Tony, the idea is if a target date and E and D would, uh, would be certified, and we buy it.
Ideally, we'd like to have E and D certified earlier, so that when we go out with the budget, we already know it's been approved, and we're not, we're not waiting for uh, a decision from D O, D O R.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
New business, vote the school improvement plan.
So, um, again, this was sent to everybody ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this was drafted, uh, Principal Cook worked with, um, you can see all of the people that are listed here and the school council members. Um, she does meet monthly throughout the school year, um, and again, these are the recommendations that came from, that came forward from them. Um, to her credit, she has also lined it to the district strategic plan, that this group approved, uh, a year ago, two years ago, I forget which, what the exact date was. Um, so again, looking at, you know, the objectives of, the number one objective, teaching and learning, second objective of access equity and outreach, and the third objective, infrastructure. Um, so if you go through this, she has connected all of those things. Um, she's also brought in information from the accountability report, uh, the district report card, and the, um, I wanna call it conditions survey, but I don't think that's what we call it, the, the staff, parent and student survey that was done.
Yeah.
Atmosphere survey, okay, we'll go with that, I don't remember exactly what it was called. Um, so again, all of that stuff has been compiled in here, um, and again, they're, you know, they're, they're making some specific recommendations, it started on page six, uh, about the things that they want to target. Um, hopefully everybody had a chance to read it. Um, it, it is in support of our transition to a new master schedule, it's in support of a transition to one year of biology instead of our current model of two, um, so that we could actually do biology, uh, MCAS biology in ninth grade, so that we're not overwhelming our students with, with three MCAS exams as sophomores. Uh, there's some continuation of some, some projects and some things that we've started to do there. Um, you know, the outreach piece includes some stuff around, um, recruiting in middle schools and bringing eighth graders in here and updating that. Um, the GPA scale, the early college designation, which is something that's ongoing. Uh, our director of academic programs has been, um, kind of the driving force behind a lot of that, trying to get us the early college designation for our students. Um, and then, you know, the infrastructure piece, uh, we've kind of shifted our focus at this point in time to look more at MSBA and getting us up prepared for that, and seeing kind of where that leads us in the future, so. Um, and Principal Cook had asked about attending tonight, I told her that I was more than willing to speak on her behalf, um, so that she did not have to be here late on Tuesday night. Um, so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Should we like be considering the policy stuff yet? I, I know that's not school improvement, but for the new reg, the new regulations and now, I think anyone, permissions? The admissions policy.
They haven't finalized that yet, there's, this, this, no, there's a bill moving through Congress, uh, excuse me, Congress, then the legislature now, um, to put that on hold and actually have a formal legislative study done on that whole process, and if that passes, that should be, that should be out of legislature by, I'm gonna say probably mid-August, late August, if that passes, that's gonna pause this whole thing anyways.
All right.
And to date, DES has not released anything. Um, and to date, DESC has not released anything on the updated guidance or regulations or expectations. Uh, we will have to do that, but my guess is it's gonna be late summer, early September, before the information.
There's a process in place already that the policy subcommittee looks at the admissions policy.
Every year.
At the end of every summer anyway, so we'll already plan to meet. It's just a question of whether we'll meet and be discussing a big change or meeting and discussing a little change.
My only comment. And I will go to the people who are on the curriculum subcommittee. I would rather things like this show up in a curriculum subcommittee meeting first, that, you know.
That's my point. I'll, I'll, I'll take ownership of that, yeah.
Okay.
Um, we, we were running out of time. Um, and I, I need to be better about getting it from her earlier in the spring, so that, that is, that is on me.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, we should approve.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, I did think of that Saturday night.
Oh, did you?
Contemplating the world's problems, yes. But then it was too late.
What about that?
Okay.
All right, um, can I have a motion?
There's a motion that we accept the school improvement plan as written.
Second.
Any more comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote. Professional development plan. Time for water.
Sorry. Um, again, this was, this was developed by Principal Cook, um, in conjunction with, uh, the members of the leadership team, all of the directors. Um, and again, this ties back to, she again did a nice job tying this back to the district strategic plan and the objectives that we have here. Um, I will be honest, um, on the last page of this, we did keep some of these things, uh, or the last, next to the last page, we did keep some of these things a little open-ended. Um, we do have a new director of curriculum instruction and assessment that's coming on board. Um, so we wanted to make sure that, that he had some flexibility. Um, we also have a vocational director, um, starting July first, so allowing the two of them to kind of find their path, if you will, over the summer, um, and set some direction, so this, this may not have, um, as many specific things in it as we usually bring forward, but, um, that was intentional, just with all of the changes that are coming. You, you just wanted to make sure that people had the flexibility to, uh, you know, kind of put their stamp on stuff as they stepped into those roles and, and advocated for the things that they thought were important.
I just wanted to see, I know, um, again, should that have come through, uh, curriculum?
It should have.
Okay, okay, I understand, well, no, I know, but, what? Okay, you probably did last year, whatever, I can see some slide, yeah. I just wanna see, uh, uh, just a variety of offerings for the staff, that's what I would like to see, uh.
We did expand, on the last page, we did expand some of the stuff.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's definitely some new offerings over the stuff that we had last year.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yep.
I mean, uh, there's, uh, and, and that, and all this stuff here is, is no charge, you know? Correct, I mean.
It's within district.
Uh, within district, which is great, I mean, uh, cause I've talked to some teachers, you know, they, these online classes, uh, they're not cheap, you know? Cause there's a whole, there's a whole.
There's a whole industry for that.
There's a whole industry that's taken off, and I know you're monitoring those very carefully, and people are shelling out money to get credits, you know, making sure that.
They're legit.
What they're doing, I know, I don't, I mean, I know, so. Anyway, that's what's come on, that's what's come out there, you know, you see them advertised, anyway. Thank you.
All right, um, are a lot of these done in the summer? Do we do any of the things right here in the summer?
No, most of this is done during the school year, yeah, most of this is during the school, so all of the one, on, on this last page, all the ones that say online self-paced courses, teachers can access at any time, so there are some staff members that will do them over the summer. Um, we also do a lot of stuff, um, you know, where it says various, we do different things throughout the school year, where one of our staff members will get paid to do a fifteen-hour class. And then teachers can attend in and, and get the P V Ps and the salary credits for, uh, you know, working with students with disabilities or supporting E L students in the class, you know, whatever it is. We'll try to tailor those more to, uh, what we have it to be in for.
All right.
Yeah.
Ron, didn't you do things during the summer as well?
Uh, let's see, we, well, they, you could go to, uh, a lava conference.
There's, there ha- there has been some conversation about hosting, um, like Mava classes, again, where we have, we have some new vocational instructors, so if, for instance, we had eight or ten people that needed to take, uh, seminar for new teachers, um, we could potentially host it here, um, open it up to other schoo- you know, we, we open it up to other schools to try to fill the class. Um, we do typically, uh, and we only do it every, I think it's every third year, um, we always host the, um, the OSHA renewal. So we have a book, we have a bunch of people certified for general industry, a bunch of people certified for construction. So we'll always bring them in for, I think it's a, it's either a three-day class or a four-day class. So we, we do to host some of that stuff. Um, and again, our hope is that, uh, our plan is that next session's a hope, that's a little too pie in the sky. Um, our plan is to come back next year, uh, you know, and ha- with the input of our new, uh, curriculum director and have, have him provide some specific feedback and say, these are the things that we've identified. Um, and here, you know, here's some specific things we wanna offer moving forward, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, we have, the building has been used with things, but I don't know to the.
Yeah, okay.
For what, I know, just saying, during the school year, there's stuff going on.
I know, right.
So, so do you have professional development days for, for teachers? And how many of those are there in this?
So we have, um, we have four full days, and then there's a series of half-days that are spread out throughout the school.
And so some of these courses would actually happen, probably during that time?
No, these are in addition to that.
Oh, in addition, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I need a vote on this.
Do we have a motion? I mean, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to support, to endorse the professional development plan as written, on second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote. Budget transfer.
Um, that was, um, I believe that was, that was what Ron made the motion on, to give me the temporary authority.
Oh, all right.
Could do that?
Yeah, what about the designation person?
Oh, yes, we do need it, we do need it on that one. Um, when you came in tonight, uh, there was a memo at everybody's seat, um, asking for a vote, asking for this board to vote to, um, authorize me to be the, uh, the temporary, um, yeah, what's the title, temporary.
Chief.
Chief buying, chief purchasing officer, thank you. Um, again, we, we need to designate somebody at this point in time, uh, we need to be able to issue purchase orders and be able to continually buy things throughout the school.
And it's best that it be you and there's not somebody in the business office that, that fits the qualifications? I'm not questioning that you won't do a wonderful job, I'm just.
I mean, I don't think this is a great situation regardless, but I think it should be, it should be me um, versus somebody that's actually down there that has access to the software and can transfer funds and do all of those other things, I think it would be better, um, if it resided with my office.
That makes sense, that's a good point.
Think, then you would then have del- you would then have authority to delegate responsibilities to these staffs.
Which is exactly what I'll do, I'll delegate it back to our purchasing agent, who is the one that has done that right along.
Is, is it typical that there's only one person that's usually, just in a situation like this, there's only one person? And then when that person's unavailable, you have to then scramble to.
No, because they have designated somebody in the office to do certain things.
So there was.
And there are people who are already designated.
Right, right.
But you need a chief, yeah.
But you still need a C, you need a chief purchasing officer.
Okay.
How is our purchasing person?
Julia, yeah, Julia Ventros, Julia, yeah, so, and we're, so I'm asking for you to vote tonight on this, because this is the last time this body's together. We are still trying to research, um, this may have already been filed in the inspector general's office, where it says the superintendent and the business manager are authorized to do this. I didn't get a response back from them before this meeting, I don't wanna not have this body vote on it and then find out that we had to. Um, so this, it may not be something we need, but I wanted to get it done in case we have to have it. Cause I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be chasing my tail on this.
All right, I'll make a motion, we designate, uh, Tony McEachran as chief purchasing officer for the school district.
Second. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote. All right, the other one was done.
We did that already.
And. And future agenda items. Any good thing of something, well, think about.
Potential vote there, that's doing.
We gotta discuss that executive session.
That is coming after our executive session.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, I, I'll future agenda it, Pat, I was thinking, um, August first, we, um.
Talk about those things?
No, no, I'm thinking of Tony taking us right beginning of the day to all the projects in the building to see what's going on, you know, we talked about him, and then he shown us a bunch of slides, three pictures, but I.
Field trip.
Field trip, yes. Tom, Tom will be driving the bus.
Should I get the golf cart from now?
Get the golf cart, let's get the golf cart.
We will.
Um, no, we tried to, I know, la- last year, uh, last year, we tried to do it in the afternoon, and people were tired, and Gwen goes, I gotta get to the lake. So I said, uh, but we said no.
I said I had to get to Maine.
But I think.
My husband burned down the house.
I know, you worried about that, I think if we just start the day, check the, you gotta just tour, you know, something.
We, we don't have to spend a lot of time, but.
No, that's fine, you can lead the tour.
Absolutely.
That's my suggestion.
Uh, MSBA update, like, what the current status is, I know you talked about what the current makeup was gonna be of the,
like, sub, like, the building committee?
Yeah.
And I think another concern you raised was, I mean, and compounded by the current situation, um, what's gonna be done to help, like, get all that documentation?
Yeah.
So is that something you wanted to comment on or think about to come back or?
Um, I mean, is, are you suggesting that for future agenda item, or is that something you want me to?
Yeah, I think, uh, MSBA would be a future agenda update, and then the, the, an update on the building committee, but I guess the third one is more, as for now, if we're going into this, what's your, what's your idea of, like?
So, I mean, our official kickoff is August first. Um, I had hoped to have a little bit more time to dedicate to this, but obviously, some of those circumstances have changed. Um, so, I mean, it is, it is definitely a priority. Um, we have a leadership, we have like a wrap-up meeting for the leadership team next Monday. Um, and that is one of the things that's on the agenda to discuss with that group and say, here's the things that we need to do. Here's the timeline, uh, you know, who's gonna take the point on this piece, who's gonna take the point on that piece? We have to pull together information about the current conditions of the bill, you know, like, how big are the science labs, how many do we have, where are they located? How many English classrooms do we have? Which shops have really dedicated related space, which ones don't? So, um, I wanna kind of divvy that up amongst the leadership team and let them go out and kind of start to do some of that stuff. Um, so that when, when we hit that August first deadline, we've collected some of those pieces. Um, at that August first meeting, um, I, we, I, I may request that we put on the agenda to have a discussion about the makeup of that building committee.
I was gonna suggest that.
Depending on how weird that timeline is gonna come up. Again, I think, I think we might have to make some decisions on that day, however, moving forward.
But I guess through the whole process, do you feel like, I mean, you're not gonna know until then, but based on the current situation, you think that you're gonna need, like, outside assistance, or you think you're gonna have enough?
I don't think so, there's enough, uh, between Tri-County and Diamond and, uh, South Shore and Old Colony and Franklin County, there's, there's enough schools that have gone through it in the past couple of years where I think, uh, I'm gonna be able to lean on them and say, hey, can you share your, uh, you know, your F plan with me? You know, just so I can see how it was formatted and how stuff was documented. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of rely on some of our sister schools. Um, and I, I don't anticipate having an issue getting this stuff from them, so. Um, once I get that, if almost it's a change in direction, we might have to have a different conversation, but right now, that's the plan.
And also for that August first, um, let's think about some other things for the agenda, if you can, if you can, within the next week or, you know, or so.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, if anybody has anything, get it to your attention, I know, we, you and I discussed that the national dimensions, you know, talking about A I policies and stuff, just, uh, something.
Who's holding on to that? I gave him the whole policy.
I, and I turned, I turned.
Director, I'm the director.
No, I understand that that's something.
I didn't hold on to it.
I like to see us, uh, put something together in writing, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Before we go into executive session, I need to ask Howard a couple of questions um, regarding what we're going into executive session for, and I'm personally not comfortable with going into executive session when the person is on medical leave. Um, but I wanna understand if proper notice was given and what that is, and then also with the open meeting law, um, what the purpose of the meet, uh, the going into executive session for this actually is.
I think it's, uh, on the agenda to.
It just gives the.
Discuss complaints and charges against an employee.
Yeah.
Yeah, but can you do that in executive session?
As long as you give notice and notice was given.
Okay, and what is notice? How many, like, is it a week, a day?
Forty-eight hours under the statute.
Forty-eight hours? Okay, even though the person's on medical leave?
The person wasn't on medical leave when notice was given.
Right, so we gave the notice and then we're informed of the medical leave. Uh, we haven't received any request to continue the executive session, although we, we can. That's the committee's wish.
Okay, well, personally, I'm not comfortable going into executive session to discuss it when the person's on medical leave. Um, not, I don't believe they actually sit in the session with us anyway, but.
They would.
Oh, they would, yes.
Okay. Well, because I would rather have her, the person here, than have, be having a conversation about it, but that's just my opinion. Um.
How does everybody else here, I mean, oh, you could certainly.
I just wanna make that, put that on the record.
I mean, if you would wanna vote not to go into executive session for that, take it out of executive session, you can certainly ask that, you know?
Is that something I can do?
Yeah, it's, it's.
I mean, is it something you can discuss in open session?
Well, I would prefer not to.
No, we're not gonna discuss it, I mean, to take it off the agenda.
Okay.
I think this is a potential legal ramifications to this discussion.
Right, is it possible to, the designation that's in there anticipates the possibility of action being taken related to a, to a staff member? Is it possible to discuss issues without any intent of taking any action?
Kind of what I was gonna say is, you know, can we take, can we take action without that staff member here to comment?
Yes, notice was given, no, notice was given. Notice was provided within, within the legal framework.
But you're, you're saying something totally different.
Yeah, I, in part because I will defer to Howard, but I would be a little concerned about the, for multiple reasons, those perhaps that Gwen offered, but also just from a, from the school's perspective, defending any action under those, that's, I don't know what the, it, I don't know where, how that might look down the line.
All of this sounds like a conversation for executive session.
We, we could do that, and let's just do that. You can always have, uh, if you wanna continue it, we, we could always have a Zoom meeting if you don't wanna meet in July, when, if and when that.
Right, this, this discussion needs to take place in executive session, I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
And we, you have to, we have to announce that you're coming back out, cause we get a little.
Yes, we do have to. All right, executive session pursuant to M G L thirty-eight, section twenty-one A one, to discuss complaints and charges against an employee and also for union contract negotiations for clerical and cafeteria, and we will come out possible vote on the union contracts. All right, so I needed a second, do I get a second?
Yes, Terrance.
No, Terrance did.
Sorry.
I, I vote no.
Okay. Kent?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
That's Terrance.
Yeah.
Yes.
She votes yes. Oh, out of executive session, no, not where we're in exec, oh, yeah. Public session, it's in public session, God knows. Uh, it is nine oh nine, and we have three votes we have to do, so.
All right.
Do you wanna do yours first, um?
I make a motion to appoint an interim business manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Me. Okay. One opposed.
Eight, one.
Yes, Gwen opposed.
Yeah. Okay, uh contract negotiations. Clerical, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the clerical contract as written. It has been reviewed by our attorney, correct?
That one, that one has been reviewed by Howard.
Yeah, yes, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?